...session to interview your applicants for former Councilor Folsom's position. Jennifer Harris with John, application. You didn't hear from me as well. Beth Cook?
I did hear from Beth Cook and she had a prior commitment. She said for her next Monday, the 20th, the 17th, that we publicly noticed was it a very tight schedule for her? She could potentially make it to Saturday, the 22nd was a better day for her. And she tentatively kept that date open. So if the council considers another Saturday, that day does work for her.
Nancy Taylor?
Nancy Taylor, I did hear from her initially likewise, I believe, weekends, Saturdays worked better for her. She did not confirm for today though.
I can't hear a word that's being said.
You can move up if you'd like, there's several seats available.
You don't have hearing aid devices here.
Thank you.
Or is this an illegal meeting? Because it's one of the other.
Mr. Claus, please stop.
What, Joe?
This is, please stop. We're not going to start having interaction from the crowd. This is the council's work session. You're here as a public citizen. You can participate by listening, not talking, okay?
I'm not trying to talk, I'm trying to hear, Joe.
Okay, then you can move up.
I'll move up and if I can't hear, the same complaint's going to be there.
That's fine.
Because it's an illegal meeting if you don't have that there.
Fine, just please.
Mr. Claus, did you contact anybody at City Hall and ask to have hearing advices here at this meeting?
No.
No.
You're supposed to, as a matter of law, have them here, Ms. Henderson.
So you can hear.
It's not a matter that I need to tell you the law. You're supposed to take care of the law.
Yes, sir, but you can hear right, you can hear me right now, can you not?
Like the people who sent over my subpoenas to shut it down.
Can you hear me right now?
I can hear you if you're a little louder.
Okay, thank you, I've made my point.
Now I can't hear you now. What did you just say?
Your condolences.
So we have an applicant who has a funeral to attend at 11 o'clock. So if the other applicants, unless the other applicants have any concern, we'd like to have Renee Brask go first because she doesn't. I actually have a funeral to attend to, but I'm not going to make the same funeral unfortunately. So if you can give my condolences, I'd appreciate it so much. Please come up. Does anybody on the council have any comments or questions about the procedure for it again?
Is there a time limit or are we just going to kind of go till all?
I don't think so.
What, three or four people here?
Yeah, there's three people here. We didn't notice the entire meeting until when?
There is no end time to the meeting.
Okay, so it's like as much time as we need.
All right.
But try to be approximately fair with the same amount of time for everybody.
And Councilor might also remind the Council as he is recording, we need to be mindful to make our voice carry and to be very clear.
Okay.
So I just have one comment. I was going to ask each applicant with the consent of the council if they just want to take two or three minutes to give an opening statement about themselves and how long they've lived in Sherwood and just some details for the council and then anybody who will watch the video later, so.
Okay, so my name is Renee Brask. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity. I have been in Oregon, it'll be eight years at the end of this particular month, so the 26th will be my eighth year. And I've been in this community serving for those eight years as well. I am a graduate of Indiana University and my degree is in Political Science and Spanish, especially International Studies. So I believe with that Political Science background, I would make a good candidate for this position. I had aspirations all along to be involved in the government and at the federal level. And unfortunately or fortunately for me, my path changed. I went away from law and actually began serving at the YMCA. And I've been doing so for the past eighteen and a half years. Through that, I've been very connected with the communities that I've served in. My YMCA career has given me different leadership skills that I think would be very helpful in this position as a city councilor. It also gives me a variety of different touchpoints within the community between the Y and my service to the community within Rotary, Chamber, serving the Senior Center, Wheels on Wheels and other varieties of capacities and the school district as well. I believe that those things will provide an advantage and connection points that will help fill the obligation that I believe councilors have to this community.
Who would like to go first with a question?
I'll go first.
Okay.
So what particular skills do you think you can bring to the council?
As a leader and being a professional in professional development for a number of years, eighteen years, I've had the opportunity to train at a national level and then go out and train and develop staff across the country. So I believe I possess the leadership skills of problem solving and critical thinking. I believe that I have good listening skills, which I think is a very high level skill necessary for this position. I have a skill of coaching and leading others, group work, project management. I also do mentoring. And so I think all those different capacities come together for positive leadership skills. I can honestly say that in every position I've held in my career, I've been in leadership levels. And I believe I have those talented skills that would do a great job for this community.
Would you prefer the council member?
I'll kind of piggyback on that question. And can you give an example in the community of how those strengths have already benefited Sherwood in some fashion in all your previous eight years volunteer work?
Yeah, I've had the opportunity to serve in leadership levels within the community for Chamber of Commerce, Rotary Club of Sherwood. But more importantly, my role as Executive Director of the YMCA. We are the most successful YMCA in the Portland metro area. And I would venture to say within the Oregon, the state of Oregon. Our retention rate for membership is above the national average. We have sixty-four percent is the national average and we're at sixty-nine percent retention for membership. Programs and services have increased and surpassed our goals within the community and beyond. And more importantly, I think the retention rate of our staff, so it's above average again, we're at eighty percent retention per staff. And I think that speaks a lot to our leadership within the, or my leadership within the community and within the Y itself because we are preparing the next group of leaders for not only here locally but beyond. And the fact that we are one of the largest employers of the youth in our community, I think that speaks a lot.
So in the next month, we're anticipating a new contract with the YMCA. And you know, I certainly don't see a conflict because of the timing. But moving forward, do you see areas that you would need to recuse yourself, you know, in the, you know, in the future? You know, after that's done, let's say presuming there's an extension of the time also, so that that issue is behind us. Sometimes you see, I mean, we can always recuse ourselves, but the question is, do you see times that you might need to, you have a problem with?
Based on the direction that the contract's going, I do not see that there would be a need to recuse myself. However, integrity is extremely high on my value scale. So if I perceive there to be an issue with that, I would definitely recuse myself to protect the community.
Can I ask?
Sure.
I heard you say you lived in Sherwood for eight years. I think I heard you list some volunteer work that you've done. Can you tell us more about what you may have done in your volunteer work to help build a stronger community in Sherwood?
Yes. So I've served as a Rotarian for eight years. And in that capacity as a Rotarian, I've been the treasurer, the president, past president, and service chair for a number of years. I've also chaired the fundraiser, which is the tree sale. So it's an annual event. It's our major fundraiser, we raise upwards of thirty thousand dollars or more. And that's how we contribute back to the community through Boy Scouts, the Performing Arts, the YMCA and other venues. Served as a Chamber President, Chamber Board for a number of years and Chamber Ambassador. I also, in March and October of each year, serve through Good Samaritan Saturday. So my husband and I actually go and clean windows for local seniors. I served as a speech and debate team high school coach last year. And very proud of the students because every single one of them were fourth point O GPA and actually won an award from the school district. So that was very, very exciting. I serve for Wheels on Wheels, so about once a month I go and I take food to the local seniors. I've served on the Committee for Relay for Life. I help at various community events such as Cruising Sherwood, Robin Hood Festival. Rob and I set up the stage for the Alter Arts Festival a couple of years ago. We set up the stage for the Stan Slant.
Dennis Hall, speak.
Thank you, Memorial with test keys. We also serve the local homeless and yes, we do have homeless in Sherwood. So we serve through the Hope Stier at the St. Francis Church. But then from November to March, we provide showers for the local homeless. So they come to the Y, Rob and I go in after hours, let them in to shower and then they go to their room in a warm bed. And there are multiple other venues. It's just something that I do because I believe in serving and that's what we do at the Y is service community. So it's been able to have multiple touchpoints in other venues of this community that are important to the people and the citizens.
So you were an alternate for the Charter Review Committee?
Correct.
So that was your first city committee that you were appointed to, that you've served as an alternate? So I would like to know, first of all, how did you think that process went? Obviously, we had, we had two ballot votes of which every single charter amendment passed. And I'd like to ask you why you think that the community was on board with those. And as an alternate, I'd like to know, how did you disseminate information from the Charter Review Committee out to the community so that you could help people understand, as I'm sure we all did? I had many comments, people didn't understand a lot of the, some of the language as it pertained to the charter. And then any suggestions that you had for how we could maybe have improved that process?
I felt the process went well. I'm not quite sure how the individuals who applied were selected or how the alternate was selected. I don't know that we went through an interview process.
Yeah, we had some time constraints, so.
That was my understanding as well. So that might be something to, for the last question I might improve upon would be to allow that interview process so that people who interview, or people who apply feel fully vetted. Because I think I heard that in one of the council meetings from one of the citizens that they applied and didn't feel like they were given the opportunity. Participating as an alternate and watching the process, Chair Allen did an amazing job. He's a very good facilitator. And not only led the meeting in a way that's very respectful, but heard from each participant that was serving in that capacity. And also as an alternate, gave me the opportunity to speak and share whatever my thoughts were. So I thought that was handled extremely well. As far as how I disseminated information to the people that I came into contact with, because I have such a number of touchpoints within the community, people would ask me questions and ask me what the ballot majors were about. And so I would just go down through the process, my understanding of the ballot majors. I don't like to give recommendations because it's not my duty. So I try to stay away from that. But I did, did share how the process went and why we came to the decision that we came to. It was asked frequently by many, many citizens. And to answer the process, how I disseminated information and changes, I think that answers your question.
So once, or when any of you get onto the council, what would be one major item that you would like to see happen?
So one that I hear frequently is business development. And that can take many different forms. I want to relate business development to how it affects us as taxpayers. So we all know that living in Sherwood, residential taxes are high. And talking to my mother who lives in Milwaukee and my brother who lives in Beaverton and another family member in Happy Valley, we do have sizable property taxes. Now, I could be wrong on my figure. I think with something of seventy percent of the tax base is residential, which means that my understanding is the way that you help the tax burden on residents is to encourage business development. I understand that there's a propensity for small business in this community and it's extremely important. However, talking to small business leaders and people who are interested in coming to this community, there are some difficulties and challenges because there's a lot of fees and red tape to go through. Now, I understand the SDCs have been lowered, which is great. I think that's a step in the right direction, but there are still some other challenges. So having just small business, I don't necessarily think is the right direction to go. I do believe if we were to develop the industrial, light industrial, I think that would provide some release of the tax burden. It would also encourage people to not only live in Sherwood, but to work in Sherwood. Even if we were to do something with the intel or the computer industry, more so on that end. And you know what, there's room for big box as well. And I know that there's, there's a lot of people who are against that. But there is a time and place for the different businesses that we have. That's part of democracy is having that different variety. So business development that will then help release the burden on the residents in the tax bracket.
So in the question we added at the end, what were the three top important issues facing our Sherwood in the next few years? You talked about business development and then your other two were transportation and parking. So can you elaborate on those two concerns as well?
Yeah, transportation, I've had the opportunity to have conversations with TriMet. So transportation to and from Sherwood through TriMet, but also participating in the Southwest Corridor meetings as well. And talking to businesses, in particular the wine, the wine business, there is difficulty getting off I-5 and getting to Sherwood 12, Sherwood Road and so on. So figuring out a way to change the traffic patterns or widen the road or make it easier for people to get to and from Sherwood is really, really important to our business and reading economy. Ninety-nine is another issue that I hear from both residents and business leaders in the community. So trying to figure that out is really important. The parking issue, being a resident of downtown Sherwood as well as coming into contact with business leaders, whether I am there specifically talking about business or eating dinner at a local restaurant, it's something that I hear frequently. When I was Chamber President, people would come into the Chamber office and complain about parking. As Main Street develops the downtown area, it's going to get worse. As the community center opens and is thriving, there's going to be more parking issue. When the Robin Hood Theater parking becomes something else other than parking, it's going to create more challenges. So as we continue to develop and expand downtown Sherwood, parking is going to be something that needs to be discussed more. I don't have the answer, but I know it's something that, that people in that area are concerned about. So those are my three.
Is there anything else that you'd like to tell members of council before we wrap up your interviews?
I just again, thank you for the opportunity to have this conversation. And I know you all will make the right decision and that will benefit this community. And whether I'm on council or not, I will still continue to serve the community. I will still continue to attend the council meetings, I think, from two thousand and thirteen, February two thousand and thirteen forward and this maybe two. So it's my objective to be a part of the process, not just a bystander watching. I believe in proactive, proactivity and involvement and not just sitting back and complaining. So I would welcome the opportunity and thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for coming.
You're welcome. I'll send my compliments.
So just, that was about twenty-three minutes.
Renee?
Yo.
Just a minute. Just to let candidates know the process going forward. So we may or may not have interviews on Monday night with other candidates. And then council will be talking about this on the 18th, correct?
That's understood.
Yeah.
That's acceptable.
Unless the council extends to an additional Saturday or another date, at this time, the other publicly noticed meeting is Monday.
Monday, okay.
There is not any other publicly noticed date.
So if we added anything, it would be Monday. If we added another meeting, we do it on Monday. Okay, just wanted to.
Thank you.
But if you come, then obviously there should be an update on the 18th.
Just coming to the media on the 18th.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anthony, would you like to go next?
So just in terms of fairness, I think you require about twenty-two, twenty-three minutes.
I forgot to ask, can we get a water to the applicants?
Do you want any further?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Sorry, I think of that before, Pam. So just as I indicated before, if you could just take a few minutes and tell us a little about yourself and how long you've lived in Sherwood and an opportunity for you to, I guess, share some things with us that weren't listed on the application.
Well, I've lived in Oregon since nineteen eighty and I've lived in Sherwood since two thousand and ninety-eight, two thousand and eight. And if I can math right, I've lived here sixteen years. And I'm southwest living.
Okay. All right, so maybe we'll start on the 17th this time?
I'm still thinking about my questions.
Okay.
So why don't you just go ahead and somebody else want to go first? Scott, so ready?
I can go.
Go.
What particular skills in, then, you believe you can lead the council?
It'd be arrogant of me to think that I have the skills to step right in into a position as a counselor. But what I do have is the will and the persistence to dive into a problem, into a subject, sit down, digest it and put it to use. That's, that's a skill that I have.
Okay, I guess I'll piggyback on that question then. And give us an example of how in your life in the Sherwood community, you've used that skill previously to benefit Sherwood?
In all honesty, when I, the projects or the little things that I've done for Sherwood, I've participated in the library cleanup for years. Tomorrow will be my fourth term, fourth, uh, fourth time that I've done it. And I've done the Arbor Day tree planting two or three times. So that's been the extent of my doing something directly for Sherwood. So basically, I look at myself as there's a project there that needs to be done. I'm willing to do the dirty work, willing to do the work.
So what kind of, what kind of, are there any focuses that you're interested in within, you know, council? For example, I've immersed myself in the water, you know, issues around surrounding, you know, the town a lot. And I've been involved in cultural arts, you know, and other councils have kind of focused on other areas just because that's how we spread the duties, you know? Is there interest inside, within, within being on council? Is there anything that draws you in?
Again, I think it'd be arrogant of me to say within three months until March, you know, I fill a position that makes great strides. I see this position here as a fill-in. To look, listen and then learn and then decide whether, you know, to run again. But that's the way I look at it.
Well, I must say I've appreciated your, oh, go ahead, please.
Yeah, that's fine.
I've appreciated your attendance at council. There've been so many times you've made comments into the microphone that I completely agree with. And so it has been, you know, it's nice to see people take part and express, you know, their feelings and let us know. Not, we don't get that many people.
I think there are a lot of different views out there and they all have to be presented.
Sure.
You can't all go along the party line. A lot of different views, a lot of different ways of getting things done. And I think in the end that some sort of compromise can be reached.
So I know that you're, oh, go ahead. I know you listed here that you're retired, but I was wondering if you could share with the council members your, what you did in some of your occupation? You worked for a lot of different companies, including the US Army. Seemed to be a lot of in communication, telecommunication. I was wondering if you could expand on some of that so we could kind of understand what you did before, you know, retiring?
Sure, I've worked telecommunications, worked for US West, Quest. And there I worked in sales and also customer service. I've worked most of my career in the sales, in the hard goods.
And hard goods means?
I worked for a power equipment distributor, small engines, lawn mowers, Toro, BCS, uh, wheel horse, those type, the Pacific Northwest.
You got another question?
Yeah, similar to what you asked previous candidate. On, on the application that you filled out, on the question that said, what do you believe are the three most important issues facing our city in the next two years? And you gave some pretty brief answers, even though there's a lot of lines there that, so one of your answers was controlled growth, second one was traffic, third one was provide leadership that can be trusted, no self-interest. And I was wondering if you want to walk through those three and explain a little bit more about what you meant by a lot of that.
The most obvious one that I deal with every day, the minute I walk outside my door, the minute I, you know, cross the street is a traffic issue. I think it's way, way too out of hand, way out of hand, meaning residents and visitors going too fast through the neighborhoods. Deal with that every day. I walk my dogs from my street across Roy Rogers because it's a nicer walk, you know, they don't get as agitated. And you're taking your life in hand if you cross that street at the wrong time of day. I'd really like to see, regardless of what happens here today, that Sherwood take a hard look at controlling traffic in a much more safe, much more, in a more safer manner. And one of my things, what I would really pursue are, as I've said before, speed bumps, traffic calming devices.
So that was the traffic one. How about the controlled growth one and the leadership that can be trusted?
Again, it would be naive to think that Sherwood is not going to grow. I mean, all the facts look that way. Everyone wants to, a lot of people want to move to Sherwood. But I think that we need to keep that small town flavor here. Just don't want to see this sprawl. There's some beautiful areas around here. And want to keep it in a manner that keeps, keeps the environment friendly and allows, but still allows growth. I know that's convoluted thinking, but it's there.
All right, how about providing your fifth thing to the classes?
Okay, I think past history, past year, in all honesty, you know, it's been very contentious city council meeting between city council members and the citizens of Sherwood. I think that's going to go hopefully with new blood that's going to be, you know, left behind. And I think we're going to start fresh, that's what I'm hoping.
Well, I'd like to hear what, what you think you can accomplish.
What's on the table for the next, next, uh, from now until March?
Well, there's several issues that are coming up. And maybe might not be a part of it, but whatever it is, you'll have to deal with it for a period of time. So.
I can deal with it. I can digest the information. You give me the, the information, I'll digest it and make, hopefully, wise decisions.
So what do you do in a setting where you're at a city council meeting and you get some controversial comments or whatever towards either you or a topic that you're interested in? How do you even deal with that?
Probably wear my heart on the sleeve and hopefully, you know, I've seen members of the council take it to heart also, react. And, uh, hopefully, I would not react. Cause I've seen it all around. Think everyone's been guilty of that.
Um, if you were to, um, serve on the council or board or commission, um, what would be your strategy or philosophy for getting out and meeting people and getting feedback from people and bringing that information back to the council?
I'm certainly available. I'm retired.
Sure.
What else am I gonna do? That's why I'm here.
Right.
That's why I do wanna serve, I wanna serve Sherwood and what that entails, meeting people, finding out what they want. That's what I'm willing to do.
And so how would you go about doing that? How would you, um, you've lived here for sixteen years and, um, you've been involved in some, obviously in the library and arbitrary, and those are, you know, events that happen every year. Um, and I'm just curious how, how, um, I mean, everybody interacts with the community in a different way. Like Council Grant said, some counselors are interested in water, cultural arts, or planning, or Parks Board. And so, um, he asked you if there's some area of the city that is of particular interest in you. And so you said, traffic is a huge concern of yours. And so I'm just wondering how you would go about, you know, meeting people. Um, you put on your app, um, your major area of interest in participating was to giving a voice to ordinary citizens. And so I would, I'd really like to know, um, you know, what, everybody has different ideas on how to get that feedback. Um, sometimes you get it when you attend an event in town. Sometimes you get it when you just run into somebody at the grocery store. And so I'm just wondering if, um, you have any ideas that you think are unique that haven't been tried, you know, to get feedback from citizens?
Let me like digress just a little bit. Those sixteen years that I've lived in Sherwood, um, three days or three nights of, uh, besides working, I've always been given to a sports club that I participated in, Portland Rugby Club. So two nights of prac, of practice, one day of practice, which, you know, entailed traveling to Boise, Seattle, wherever, even the Arizona. So, uh, that's not an excuse for not being involved.
Sure.
Um, I wanna be involved now. As far as, uh, you know, how do I, how do I pursue my interest in the traffic issue? Think, attend, um, Washington County meetings? If it takes, uh, state meetings, I can do that. I'm retired. Um, as far as, uh, meeting the people, um, I think we need to avail, avail ourselves to, um, city council meetings before, after. Um, I know you guys have your picture on in City Hall. Maybe put a phone number underneath it and say, hey, you have a concern? Give me a call. And, uh, you know, the, uh, city of, uh, Sherwood, the website also has phone numbers. I, maybe we need to push that more. Um, I'd like to think, okay, I can go out and, uh, walk into different neighborhoods and say, hey, hi, um, you know, what are your concerns about the city? And I'm not above doing that also.
I might have to ask you a whole question.
Sure.
Tony, when you first started, I was taking some notes and I'm not sure. I heard you say sixteen years, but I heard you say you've lived in, in Oregon since nineteen ninety-eight. But then I heard you say in two thousand eight moved to Sherwood. So can you clarify all that?
Yeah. Ninety-eight. My math is bad, okay? The math is finance, not my forte. I've lived in Sherwood for sixteen years.
Okay, alright. So then my next follow-up question on that then, in, in those sixteen years, um, what have you done to build a stronger community for families and children in Sherwood?
As I stated, uh, in all honesty, I've gone to the library and helped participate four different times. And I've gone to the Arbor Day and helped plant trees. And that's, that's my extent. But, you know, the, you know, that saying, come at the hour, come at the man. Okay, here I am.
Okay. Is there anything else you'd like to share with the membership council?
Yeah, I did, yeah, um.
Around?
I did a little bit of research last night as to, you know, what, uh, city council does. And, um, you know, briefly, the legislative branch of city government, um, looks at the city's goals, major projects. Um, it's kind of hard to, you know, in this brief period of time, to think major accomplishments are going to happen. But I sure would like to try, um, uh, improve, um, infrastructure improvements ranging from community growth to land use and to finances and to strategic planning. So if during that time, those, um, items, subjects, those themes come up, then I will delve into it. Then, I guess here's what I think I would like to accomplish if I, if I get a chance. I'd like to do the very best to represent the citizens of Sherwood, uh, only after I've seen that the needs of the town come first. So that's, I think that would be what I would hang my hat on. And you've given me a chance to wear a suit today. Last time I wore a suit, I was going to a funeral almost exactly one year ago today.
Well, you look very professional today, so.
I know, always.
But thank you for coming and.
Oh, thank you.
Appreciate you applying, so. Um, okay, if we just take a, hold on a break. Ready? Dan King, it's our third and last app that I have, so this will become, okay. Before, you could just, uh, open a statement and then we'll ask a question.
Tony, good morning to the board. It becomes cold morning.
Yes.
Uh, appreciate the opportunity to speak to you this morning, answer your questions.
Dan, can you do just a little louder?
A little louder, okay?
Yeah, there we go.
Keep my voice over here.
I know you have that long, versatile voice.
Yes, I do. My wife tells me to loud all the time, so. Anyway, um, anyway, uh, I've lived in Sherwood since nineteen ninety-seven. Um, started on the Parks Board, uh, nineteen ninety-nine with current, uh, councillor Linda Henderson. Um, we chaired the Parks Board together, I believe, for about three years, hopefully. Um, I was there for not quite five years. And then I served on the Planning Commission for a year. And then at that time, I ran for office, uh, City Council. And I served the city for four years at that time. Um, the only reason I didn't run for reelection was because of the fact that I did go through a divorce and I did have to move out to the city for about a year and a half. And then I did move back in, so, um, you know, I'm back here now, so glad to be back. Um, I'm remarried to my lovely wife Heidi. And, uh, I'm very happy to be back here at this time and willing to serve again in some capacity for the city. Um, I think my, uh, feeling of service actually dates back to when I was a Boy Scout. Uh, I am an Eagle Scout. And so it's, started way back when I was eleven years old. And I served three years in the Marine Corps in the capacity in the military police. And in my course of service to our country and then moving into Sherwood, I got involved in, with the park that exists today is Lady Fern. I helped facilitate that, uh, park over there, since the west side of the highway was very negative in having any parks. I happen to live in the house that sits next door to the park and, and that's really how I got started in, in my time in service of the city. And it just blossomed from there, so. And there's a lot of things that have gone on since then. So if you have any questions concerning any of those capacities I served in or I, you know, things you wanna know, I'll try and answer them for you, so.
So, um, you start, your, your first service for the city was on Planning Commission?
On the Parks Board.
Oh, Parks Board, okay. Then you went to planning after that?
Yes.
Right, okay, I'm trying to, um, well, you and I served together.
That's right.
Uh, for four years. And, um, so you and I both seen all kinds of different, uh, styles of council, right?
Sure.
Did things change as things changes?
Absolutely.
Why don't you, you know, uh, I, I could do this, but one of you can describe, you know, what things were like overall in whatever terms you want, in your four years that you served with me years ago. And then compared to what you've seen in the last two years.
Well, I guess, uh, the council that you and I served on, we had Keith Mays as our mayor. Um, and at that point in time, um, I felt that, uh, there were issues that as a council that we voted on. Um, probably we agreed on, you know, the conclusion of what we voted on. We agreed on probably ninety percent of that. And whatever we disagreed on, I mean, the vote was always a four-three vote between councillor Anderson, me, and Dave Rondus. But, uh, we did not have, we certainly did not have that, or maybe that is, exists today on that council. I mean, it's, we communicated with each other and, uh, we never got personal with each other ever. So I, you know, I felt we did have a good council and we did accomplish a lot on that council. Uh, well, probably one of the biggest things we accomplished on that council was, um, our future water resource.
Oh, you were on council during that time, I forgot.
Absolutely. I mean, it's the most important thing we have going in the city and that's our availability of water. How do we, how do we expand? How do we accommodate the people and the businesses that will move here? And we cannot do without water because at one point, Wilsonville, um, had a moratorium on any development whatsoever because of their water issue, so.
Okay, good.
Sure, I asked a similar question of, of others. You've lived here since nineteen ninety-seven and in all those years, uh, in what ways have you volunteered, contributed to the community to build a stronger place for families and children?
Well, like I mentioned before, I got started on the Parks Board. Um, I think my big, biggest satisfaction personally, being involved with the Parks Board and with my other, uh, service commitments through that time has been our parks. Uh, the city of Sherwood has the city and the state of Oregon has more green space, more park space per capita than any other city in the state of Oregon. We're also the only city that has a wildlife net and a refuge within city limits. And so I feel, uh, the park development that has gone on has, is, I mean, that's our, that's our shining beacon of our town, really. Uh, you look at Snyder Park and the amenities that are up there. Um, I started with that on the Parks Board and it wasn't finished until I was on council. And I think, and I'm pretty sure, uh, Linda would, councillor Henderson would back me up. This is when we were on the Parks Board co-chairing it together. Um, at that time, it was the mayor Cottle's administration and his council that had asked the Parks Board, um, essentially to review how that was gonna progress in Snyder Park at the time. And, uh, my feeling was, was that the council wanted to phase that part uh, from doing the active side of it first and then phasing the passive side of it. And I re, I re, um, rang led very clearly as a, we were on the board having a meeting and I looked at Linda and I said, we can't do that. We cannot give the council a pass to develop in phases because it'll just string out and morph and change it, I just, other things down the road. And so as a board, we made a decision that we told the council that we wanted it all built, we wanted to get it done. And that's what happened, so.
So Dan, what, what particular skills do you bring to council?
Well, um, I work in law enforcement. Some people don't maybe look at that. The side of law enforcement I work has been legitimate, I do, but, um, I worked in the county jail downtown in the high-rise. I call it the penthouse. Um, I worked, I worked in law enforcement, I was in, in the Marines. But I think the critical thing in my time on council was when we were going through the issue with the police department.
With what issue, I'm sorry?
The police department.
Oh, yeah. Oh, that's right, yeah, hold on.
And, you know, um, I bring, uh, a set of ideas and understandings about how the police work. Uh, they have their own political environments. Um, there are things going on that I can't discuss openly still today. But I did understand the fact that the city needed to move on past the issue that was going with that. And, uh, I actually had made a suggestion to the council at that point in time what to do. They did not take that. They took that into consideration, but they ended up not doing that. But anyway, um, ultimately it still got resolved. And, uh, I think my input made a big difference at that point in time as to how things were addressed and finished up with that, with that issue. Cause really, in reality, our police department today, I mean, unlike our police department today, we have this facility and the fact that the taxpayers, uh, voted for this facility. They paid a lot of money for it. It's a very nice facility. And, uh, you know, I would like to continue on, uh, having a police department here because they tend to focus on the things that are happening in our town and what we find of, of a priority. So, um, you know, that's, I bring that to the table also, uh, understanding. And I think that's probably the biggest job that as a city, uh, what we do here is how we, uh, and that as a, as a board, I mean, that legislatively speaking, but, you know, um, we oversee the safety concerns of our city, so.
You've mentioned a lot of things from Lady Fern Park to Snyder Park and the, uh, police department. Of, of all that and all your experience from nineteen ninety-nine through two thousand nine, from Parks Board, Planning Commission, Insurance City Council, is there any one big project or issue you're involved in?
Yes.
In addition to the ones you mentioned that you really are proud of?
Yes, and I think a lot of people wonder how I'm, you know, as a city council, how I'm connected with citizens and, uh, bringing this into focus because even though I wasn't able to accomplish what I wanted to accomplish, I did make a great effort in trying to, to, uh, to accomplish that. And that was back when, as you recall, back prior to two thousand eight, we had a great appreciation of property that was going on in real estate. And so we had an issue around here in Portland. that was going on in real estate, and so we had an issue around here in Portland metro area where the landowners were selling the property, they literally out from underneath people who had their mold or manufactured homes on top of the property. And so I got together with some of the people in our city and discussed with, with, as a city, what we could do to help mitigate some of those issues, because obviously, you know, these people live on fixed incomes and a certain lifestyle that, you know, they're used to living. And, I mean, I believe in the constitution that people who own property ought to be able to do with it, you know, if they see fit, but also, my focus was the buildings that are sitting on top of that property have to be addressed to, and that was what I was trying to mitigate, was to helping these people find a way to, you know, move and be able to afford, you know, into getting into a different area, and ultimately the property owner that does sell that property. You know, it was, I think it was a legitimate concern, as those people who live within our community, they're obviously, I'm a smaller component, but they are there, so.
Isn't that property just, plus the year that we're still holding on to property?
Right, next to the rental place, over here, yeah.
Yeah.
Still vacant, yes.
Okay.
But there are some other ones that still exist that still live under the cloud of, of that potential, you know, of someone who owns the property and then passing on, and then, you know, their family, whether, you know, they may end up keeping it or they may end up selling it, and I think that's what their concern is at this point, still is, so.
So, I'm trying to remember, is that when it initially started in Wilsonville?
Well, the one closest to.
And they had a huge park that was gonna be developed, and all of those residents were displaced.
Right, and it was happening, I mean, it was happening over the, a whole metro, but the closest one was Wilsonville, that was a fairly large park that went on in the news at that time, so.
Because I remember talking about it and seeing what we could do locally, and then something happened, something wound up happening in the state.
I think, well, the other thing too is being noticed, because I think the state was looking at taking, giving them a year's notice. I don't, I don't believe that actually came through, but there was a noticing period of time that they wanted to institute on that also, so.
Okay, under the three most important issues, you have number one is keeping our community safe as we continue to grow, things you've already talked about. So can you elaborate on improving the other two, which are improving traffic infrastructure to reduce congestions and encouraging more small and medium-sized businesses to locate in Sherwood, and what your ideas are on those?
Yes, I believe it was spoke earlier on the relieving the tax burden somewhere on the residential. I believe there is various components, as far as the business size, you know, having a light industrial, even some other box stores here eventually, I mean, that's, it's all, you know, based on a timeline, but, you know, Sherwood's not gonna stop growing, I think that having space available and having certain types of businesses, not just one type, you know, that would locate here, would help relieve that tax burden. I know, Renee mentioned about seventy percent, I don't know if that figure is still consistent or not, but that's approximately what the residents make up for as far as the tax burden, but I think that as a city, we need to do a better job in saying, "We're here and we are open for business, and what can we do to help facilitate that?" So, you know, we have to go out there and figure out, you know, what is it that we can make ourselves more attractive in having businesses, you know, deciding that this would be the best place for them. So, and I mean, we certainly have the people here, which would be nice if they worked and lived in Sherwood. I mean, we have the people with the resources and intellect and minds that can, you know, do the work. There's no reason why we can't have, it doesn't necessarily that we provide them the jobs to do that with. As far as the traffic, I know we have the issue down by the Y across there, that eventually we need to get that going over there, because it's, that's a huge problem in the corner over there. We also need to look at maybe traffic controlling common devices in the neighborhoods. I know we have some of those up in the present neighborhood in it right now, and it helps, but handly still can be a raceway for people egressing in and out of there, so. Those are the kind of issues, you know, that I feel immediately, you know, we could address at this point in time. And, you know, the other gentleman mentioned being involved with the southwest traffic thing. I think if we're, depending on the kind of businesses we wanna attract in this town, having better access to I-5 is definitely gonna be, you know, a key issue for some, some businesses that, you know, wanna locate here potentially, so.
I guess, I don't have any other questions. Is there anything else you'd like to share with the members of the council before we?
No, I'm just, you know, I, personally, I think, and I love Sherwood, I've always loved Sherwood. I think this is the best town in all of Oregon. I wanna keep our police department here intact, and there may be things that we can do to help lower the cost of that, but I ultimately still feel strongly about the fact that we need to have our police department. If there, you know, if there's something that we can do to improve upon that, I certainly am open-minded enough to look at that. You know, my other, my other thing is, you know, our parks is maintaining them and improving upon them. I know we're looking at Snyder Park up there, we're having to do some renovations as far as the soccer field and stuff like that. I know there's some issues out there now nationally that have been discussed as far as the type of material that we use down on the soccer field, as to whether that has potential health effects or not, I don't know at this point. But those are the kind of things that, you know, are high priority for me, so. And I'm proud of them, I mean, I think the most important thing, the reason our city is the way it is is because people have the vision to understand what it's gonna take from this point on to get to achieve things that we want here in this town, and I feel that I bring that passion and a vision to fulfill those things, and to listen to the citizens, and to hopefully, you know, have less acrimony and more cohesiveness in the community on council, so.
Okay.
Anyway, appreciate the opportunity to speak with you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
So, going forward, do we have any other applicants that applied that wanna interview Monday night?
We've had Beth Cook indicating that, like I said, the schedule is very tight for her, and she would do her best, but if the council considered an additional Saturday, the twenty-second is available to her. An applicant, Bella, Naomi Bella, indicated she was not available on Monday the seventeenth. I have not heard from applicant Taylor. I have not heard from applicant Boswell. I believe that's.
And council's availability Monday night?
Available.
Everybody available?
Yes.
Okay, what time?
So at this point, the meeting is publicly noticed for six P.M. If in contacting the applicants again to confirm their availability for Monday, my question to the council would be, are we flexible to start earlier or later?
Later.
If that worked for the applicants, and if so, what would that window be?
And, yeah, I'm, basketball practice starts, but it's not till six forty-five, so. And can you briefly just go over the ballot voting code that we have to just sort of explain to those people that are here? Because I don't remember if everybody's had the opportunity to hear how that is going to work at that point the council moves forward.
Once the, once the council decides on the applicants moving forward, as the code indicates, it states that the council will make a nomination and a second of an applicant. Once the council makes a nomination and a second of an applicant, that places the applicant's name on a ballot. The ballot being a piece of paper that the council in an open public meeting, you now take a vote. On that ballot, you have to indicate your name, and it's not an anonymous vote, indicate your name and your selection of that candidate. Publicly, I need to have to read those ballots out loud, and we just narrow down the candidates at that point.
And we do that in regular session?
Correct.
So, so when you say read the ballots, you will tally them?
I physically count them, tally them, read them, this candidate received X amount of votes, this candidate received X amount of votes.
Okay, and then if there's a tie, we?
You continue to vote until you break that tie.
You create a new ballot with those two names on it?
Correct.
And continue to vote?
Correct.
And what does the code say happens after the ballot vote?
After the ballot vote, it doesn't say the next steps, it would basically be up to the council upon indicating the person that is now selected by the majority of the council to fill that seat. It's up to the council, do you want to appoint that night? If the council chooses to appoint that night, then the applicant would need to be sworn in. The council can choose to schedule the swearing-in and the appointment at a future date. So at this point, the language is silent on the next steps. It would be up to the council on how you wanna proceed.
Okay, all right, well, I, I personally would like to see if we can get some other applicants to interview Monday night as well, as many as possible, I mean, we gave notice on October fourth, so that was six weeks ago. And obviously, we had to cancel the first date because of attendance and weather, or weather concerns, and so I'd like to see if we can compel the other applicants to attend. I don't want this to drag out forever, like I said, we noticed it six weeks ago, and I would like to get, you know, moving forward with somebody who's available and willing to be considered for council, and I'd like to make sure we make every opportunity we can to get them appointed. Obviously, the following week is Thanksgiving, which probably doesn't work for a lot of people, especially with kids being out of school, a lot of people I think will be out of town, so. Can you reach out to applicants Monday and see how many of those, or even email, find out who's available on Monday, and then let, obviously, the entire council know, and then we can plan to be there on Monday, and. We can even make ourselves available, and if people can make arrangements for the last minute, we'll be there. We certainly would interview anybody who makes an effort to come, so.
Location as a reminder, Monday night is here.
Right, because there's something going on.
Go ahead, council.
Yeah, and I think it's good to keep it consistent, but maybe not changing locations.
So, so council, then this afternoon, actually, when we conclude here, I'll go back to the office, email all the remaining applicants as well as the full council, and solicit availability, and find out if an earlier time or a later time works, and we'll just wait to see what responses we receive by Monday.
Anybody else have any concerns with that or suggestions?
No, that's good.
All right, so, Joel, do you have any?
Nope.
Well, I think Anthony has a question.
I have a question, will it take full council to make the selection, or just the council members who are there?
Well, we're videotaping the meetings because other members of the council didn't come today, so the appointment happens at a regular council meeting, so if we have.
To find the selection.
Yeah, if we have a quorum at a council meeting, that's when we make decisions. So it doesn't take an entire council, because there are often times when we have regular business, but not everybody in the council can make it, so whoever's there that night, if we have a quorum, then the vote will be cast.
I, I don't think, I think everyone's kinda indicated they were gonna be there, though, but.
I don't think anybody's indicated that they won't be at the other, at the two regular business meetings we have at the, at the rest of the year, which is the second meeting next week in November, and then the third week in December. We don't have a meeting, a regular meeting on the first meeting, first Tuesday in December, because that's our Boarding Commission's appreciation dinner, so we're not doing any business that night. So, we literally only have the two meetings left to conduct business unless we call a special meeting, just to do an appointment or swearing-in.
But the application period is over with.
Yeah, it was noticed on the fourth and it closed on the twenty-seventh, so.
But yeah, you're extending your interviews.
To accommodate applicants.
I think that we just established, the first thing the conditions precedent was, if you have not applied, you're not an applicant, I accept that, that is not the question. The question is, you're adjusting your schedule to meet these applicants because they won't show up? Is that what I heard?
They asked us for a Monday meeting, and we're saying yes.
You're saying well?
Yes. They're asking us if they can come in to interview on Monday, and we're saying yes, that's fine, it's fine for me.
Yeah, we're adding the Monday because we canceled last Wednesday because of weather and other members of council who couldn't make the meeting.
And so what happens if they don't show up?
I'm gonna make a motion that we adjourn the work session.
Yes.
And, and convene an additional work session on Monday night.
And if they don't show up, they're not considered?